Resources Policy Committee, my name is Tom Hunt, I'm the Leader of the Council and Chair of the Strategy and Resources Committee. The meeting as always is open to the public and every item today is open to the public. As always, we'll be recording the meeting and it will be webcast. And lots of people have joined us today for today's meeting, so welcome everybody to the chamber. We've got no public questions or petition, we'll come to that momentarily. If I could just ask everyone to switch your phones to silent, that'd be helpful, no fire test. But if there is an evacuation, do follow instruction from the staff. I will ask first the members who are here today to introduce themselves for everyone's benefit and then the officers as well. And let me start on my left with councillor Argentio.
Councillor Andrew Argento, I'm the Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Police Committee, I represent Bromhead and Charleville Ward.
Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
Fran Belbin, councillor for First Park Ward and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle, Deputy Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Councillor Dondale, Chair of Education, Children and Families and Councillor for Shire Green and Brightside.
Councillors Aheer and Nas, councillor for the Donald Ward and Chair for the Finance and Performance Committee.
Councillor Ben Miskel, councillor for Park and Alberthorn Wards and Chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate.
Councillor Joe Orton, councillor for Dorn totally and Chair of Environmental Services and Regulation.
Afternoon, everybody, councillor Curtis Crossthorn, I am the Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee.
Good afternoon, councillor Mike Leavie, Member for West Ecclesfield, Vice Chair of Finance and Performance.
Councillor Ian Horner, Member for Beaton, Member of Transport and Regeneration Committee.
Good afternoon, my name is Diane Hurst, I'm the elected member for Richmond Ward.
Great, thanks very much. So if I could ask the officers to introduce themselves again, starting on my left please with Joe.
Hi, Joe Horrigan, Director of Integrated Commissioning, standing in for Meredith Teasdale, Director of Children's Services.
Good afternoon, Mike Jackson, interim Chief Operating Officer.
Kate Josephs, Chief Executive.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures.
Good afternoon, Greg Bell, Director of Public Health.
Good afternoon, Ashban Ali, Executive Director of Neighbourhood Services.
Thank you very much, everybody. Good to see you all. So apologies received today have been from councillor Abdul Qayyum and councillor Laura Moynihan is substitute for councillor Qayyum, councillor Martin Smith and councillor Mohammed Marouf and councillors Leavie and Horner are substituting for them today, so welcome. Item two, exclusion of the public and press, just for clarity, there's no items that contain any exempt information on today's agenda. Item three, declarations of interest, are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any item of business on today's agenda? Okay, thank you. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting which were held on the 10th of September. You've got them before you in the pack, are members happy to approve them as a correct record of the conversations that we had on the 10th? I see nods, thank you very much. Item five is an opportunity for the public to ask any questions or to present petitions to this committee, on this occasion, we haven't received any questions for or petitions for today's meeting. Item six is member questions, none have been received today. Item seven is our work programme, which is an item we come to every committee meeting. And with that, let me hand over to Craig Rogerson from Democratic Services to briefly provide an update about the work programme.
Thank you, Chair. There are two main areas to update members on this month. Firstly, around the scheduling of items, so we've got one new item on the future burial provision update. Members will recall that that was agreed at the last meeting. And then subsequent to the agenda being sent out, I've been notified of an additional item for the November meeting, which is supporting people via the Citizens Advice Bureau. Rescheduled items, we've got two items highlighted there, the homewords item and the cost of living item that are rescheduled for later in the year and the details for that are set out in the report. And then secondly, to draw members' attention to the recommended responses to council motions. So Appendix four, page 35, sets out the council motions that were agreed on the 3rd of September and details some suggested responses for the committee to approve. And I would just flag, Chair, that there was an additional referral at council in October, which came a little bit late for this committee, but we will deal with that at the next meeting.
Great, thank you very much indeed, Craig. Any questions, any comments about the work programme? Councillor Johnson?
So just on the last bit, there's quite a basket full of things coming out of full council motions and it's probably right to dispose them in a way without having full papers, but I'm just slightly concerned some things will fall through the cracks and not be fully written up there. There's one or two queries, also in terms of where it uses the word 'we', I'm not entirely sure who 'we' refers to here. So for instance, on page 37, I was just looking at the phrase, 'we will also consider how working with the PCFSE to develop projects, to reuse and repair items etcetera'. But the question is, well, who's 'we' in that context? Who's actually going to do something and how are we going to be doing that? Where is that going to be brought into the decision-making structure that we've got here? So I'm supposing just want a bit more clarity there. And then there's just some things like the play partnership, the library of things, which is a bit of an odd thing on its own, but it doesn't really fit into the cost of living approach. It doesn't really obviously fit in anywhere. I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of those things. So I've had suggestions on that, but I just want to flag that up and maybe we perhaps need, in the absence of another suggestion, we maybe just need a paper to flesh out exactly where those are going to go in a bit more detail. So who would be taking those forward in what way and what way members here will be able to monitor that something's happened to those?
Okay, helpful, thank you. I mean, I would say it's really important sort of in the pre-meetings that we have for this committee that points like that do get flagged, because then there's obviously the time to address them before we come to main committees. 'We' in this regard is S and R committee, these are responses that have been put together for the committee in the same way that if a referral was made to Housing Committee, 'we' would be Housing Committee. So it's a collective response from all of us. I think you make a helpful suggestion around how do we then track what goes forward from here? So perhaps we can just, Craig, have a conversation offline about making sure that when there are actions that are set out in the response, we have a way to monitor that and then give visibility to members so that you know that things don't just disappear. Okay, any other points from members about the work programme? No, in which case then I'm going to ask members to approve the work programme as it stands before us. Thank you very much. Which brings us then to item number eight, which is the communities' strategy. And really pleased to have colleagues joining us today. So please do come up to that top table if you're here to join us for the conversation here. Tom, you might just need to get another chair from your left, there we go. Great, thank you very much, everybody, welcome. I think before we perhaps get into the conversation around the strategy, let's do some introductions, say hello properly. Perhaps Tom and Dan, if you could introduce yourselves and then hand over to our guests to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. Afternoon, everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Customer Experience and Communities.
And I'm Dan Spicer, I'm a policy officer in the Council's Strategy and Partnerships Team.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Gungaz Hesem and I'm the CEO of Fairbell Community Hub.
Hi, my name is Olivier Temo, Chief Exec of Sadaka, the Sheffield and District African Caribbean Community Association and I'm also Chair of VCS.
Hi, everyone, Matt Dean, Chief Executive from Zest.
Hi, everyone, I'm Helen Sims, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Voluntary Action Sheffield.
Hi, everyone, my name's Stephen Gale, I'm a Community Development Officer with Age UK Sheffield.
Well, welcome, everybody, really pleased you could join us and thank you for your involvement in helping to develop the strategy that we have here before us. Tom, Dan, let me hand back to you to lead off the conversation here and perhaps you could set the scene and then involve colleagues.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm very conscious that we've already talked a lot about this paper and the strategy itself outside of committee, so I'll be as brief as I possibly can be while still trying to cover the bases in terms of this committee today. So pretty much a year to the day, in October 2024, this committee agreed that we would develop a community strategy. We initially started out thinking we could do that, I suppose relatively quickly, actually, we thought, well, we'll just write a community strategy. I think that was probably a little naive and what we've done though is spend the last 12 months working with a number of colleagues in the voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector, with elected members, with council officers and others to put the strategy together that you've got today. In particular, we have made sure that we have worked across all of those stakeholders and they've been fully involved in the development of the principles and the priorities and the very definition of communities actually that underpins the strategy. And in doing that, we were then able to go out to significant consultation over the summer, speak on the ground through a number of community events to a number of people in their own communities in terms of what we were proposing and then bring those same partners back together to actually draft the document itself jointly using a reference group of people of which some of the people here today were part. So it has generally been a collaborative effort in terms of officers, members and the voluntary community sector. Just a couple of things to pick out, I guess, in terms of the strategy itself. The definition of communities was really important at the outset of this. Often we talk community and we immediately talk about neighbourhood, we immediately go to geography and that's correct, we need to remember geography and that people often see their community as the place in which they live. The very clear feedback we got right at the start of this process though from all of our stakeholders was that we needed to define community in broader terms than that, that we need to be talking about communities of interest and of identity and to be thinking then about how the council operates in order to make sure we are fully engaged and reflecting the difference in those different kinds of community in the city, so the definition is important. What we've then ended up with is a number of priorities in terms of the document itself. The, just pausing to find a section, just apologies, one sec. So we've set out a number of organisational behaviours at the council, one needs to display going forward to play its part in the city. They're in paragraph 3.8, they are that we will design, decide and take actions with our communities, so we won't be doing things to communities, we want to work with communities. We will listen, we'll learn and we'll adapt, we'll tailor our resources and delivery to meet the needs of our communities, we'll build partnerships based on trust, we'll nurture strong relationships and we'll celebrate our communities and their strengths. What we've then gone to set out is a number of priority areas in terms of renewing our relationship with our community partners in particular and looking at how we redefine our relationship, how we work much closer with community organisations in defining what we buy, how we commission, how we deliver in communities. Secondly, looking at how we engage better with our communities in decision-making, how we're genuinely speaking to people and people in their communities about the things that the council is doing, making sure that our decision-making reflects that. Thirdly, that we're more joined up in our delivery as a council, that we are more person-focused and we put the people of the city right at the heart of the services we deliver and in most communities. And that includes things like our approach in terms of neighbourhood governance, what we will do around things like being more visible and located more closely within our communities in the future. And then lastly, the big priority around investment in Sheffield's communities and that is genuinely about saying, when we have investment, we will link much closer, more closely into communities to ask our communities how they want us to spend that money and come much more in line in terms of, you know, the people of Sheffield's priorities in terms of that. In terms of the next steps and how we will deliver it, we have an empowered communities board and section five of the report describes some of the early work that will take place to start to turn this strategy into delivery in the city. In particular, we'll see recommendation two of the report where public health will be investing £2.2 million worth of public health reserves, which will enable us to start to test the new approach in terms of working and commissioning work with the voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector and looking at how we change our relationship with our community partners in terms of that space. And the last thing probably just to say on the strategy itself is that this is about building on good work that's already taking place in the city. We're not starting from nothing here and Appendix six of the report shows some really frankly amazing case studies of work that is already taking place in the city and the intention was when we design up the strategy and it goes out as a nice shiny public document, those case studies will be part and parcel of that document so we can genuinely see and celebrate that really amazing work that's taking place. Just quickly to cover off some of the other recommendations then, so clearly the first recommendation is to agree the community strategy today. The second one relates to the public health reserves and the £2.2 million and the delegation of that to the Director of Public Health going forwards and there to test those new approaches. Thirdly, we've linked in as part and parcel of the community strategy some feedback around actually our ability as a council for our governance to support communities of interest and identity through some of our funding and we've had lots of conversations about community infrastructure level in particular. So one of the recommendations of the report is to review our governance arrangements in relation to community infrastructure levy specifically and request a further report back on that piece of work once that's been done. You'll also note that we have appended to the strategy itself a faith charter. And that faith charter is a sort of a supporting piece to the community strategy as much as anything else. It's been developed by the council in collaboration with several faith leaders from around the city, recognises that faith organisations play a really significant role in bringing people together and addressing the challenges in our city and beyond and it's a joint commitment by faith organisations in Sheffield and the council to a set of principles that will guide engagement and it aims to improve collaborative partnerships and promote open and practical working. So if that's agreed today and we're recommending obviously to approve that, we will do that ahead of the Interfaith Week in November this year and at that point during Interfaith Week, the intention is the charter will be signed by representatives of a number of Sheffield's faith communities during that event. So with that, I will maybe just hand over to some of my colleagues in voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector who's been an amazing support frankly in drafting this document and their insight throughout has been really, really, really valuable. So I wonder whether I might just pass down the line for some comments. Which way do we want to go?
Thank you and good afternoon, members. My name's Steve Gale, I work for Age UK Sheffield. Age UK Sheffield is an independent charity that provides free advice and information, dementia services and community wellbeing activities to older people in our city. And we certainly value our reputation as a trusted organisation in the city, able to reach out to and engage with communities in a meaningful way. I've been asked to say a few words about my involvement in the work in developing the community strategy. Age UK, we're very pleased to have been invited to contribute to the work in developing the strategy. And the first thing I'd like to say is that the work itself has been a significant undertaking for the council officers that have been involved and they've managed to deliver the strategy within a relatively short timescale and in the face of several challenges, including the nightmare of trying to coordinate meetings and organise diaries across a diverse range of interests, producing regular feedback and summaries from the wide-ranging discussions and the massive job of trying to shape all that comment into a coherent document, at the same time keeping all the stakeholders involved and up to speed as the strategy is evolved. I'd like to give a special mention to Tom Smith and but also Louise Branch and Daniel Spicer from the Strategy and Partnerships Team, they've been amazing in their support for getting people together and helping us work it all out. So for me, the process has demonstrated the strength of partnership working in our city and highlighted the dedication, the skill and the collaboration of council officers, members and voluntary sector representatives. And I'd particularly like to highlight and echo Tom's comments about the case studies which are part of the report. I think they in particular for me showcase the depth and impact of the work happening in communities across Sheffield. Much of it, as we know, is driven by the efforts of volunteers under very challenging circumstances. So for Age UK Sheffield, as a key voluntary organisation in the city, the community strategy reaffirms the council's commitment to partnership and community-led approaches and that's importantly to doing things differently, working more flexibly and delivering services to the people of Sheffield in a way that's responsive and will reflect their different needs and circumstances and we fully support the aims of the community strategy and look forward to being involved at the next stage.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Helen Sims, I'm from Voluntary Action Sheffield. We're a local infrastructure organisation that supports social action in the city in all its forms, from community organising, mutual aid through to volunteering and established organisations. We've been involved in the development of the strategy from the very beginning, so the design of the process and yeah, to echo Steve's comments really, it's been, you know, as the start, I see the sort of approval of the strategy today is very much the start, but if this is the kind of partnership and participation approach we can build from this point, then I think that looks really, really positive. I think also, you know, to reflect on the challenges that we have, you know, we're setting out on a 10-year strategy here, so we're looking up. We recognise through the city goals and other strategies we have in the city that the kind of level of participation and engagement we need with citizens in the city is really imperative to achieve those goals and to be able to describe the city in the way that we want to. So again, how we've come together to participate and support that is really important kind of partnership working in its foundation, but is through the strategy, you know, this is about how people can drive change in their communities. And so I think the point I wanted to make really is like it's been a really positive start, but we just wanted to recognise on behalf of the VCS Leaders Forum and the voluntary sector the challenges that we will have in delivering the strategy. So one of the things I just wanted to draw out was the kind of coordination that's required across policy areas. This is a tier-one strategy, but how it speaks to the city goals, how it speaks to other areas of policy, so our growth strategy and our plans, how community economy is developed, you know, job skills, enterprise. This is all part of the picture in terms of developing a delivery plan and one that the voluntary sector are really keen to engage with and join together. I think there's another point which is about ownership and I think it's in the council's overall plan, the kind of the phrase about what the council leads, what it enables, what it stands back and cheers on. And I think there is a key element of ownership that we really need to understand and some of that is in kind of national direction, but I think locally, we need to really understand what Sheffield people want and what our understanding of community ownership is, what our terms for that are. So this speaks to our community asset approach as a city, how we, you know, bring buildings and those assets into use and how we support ownership at a time where, you know, there are financial deficits around the development of buildings and spaces, but those spaces together with people and people assets have to work together. So I just wanted to sort of speak across how some of this knits together. And then finally, just to talk about that initial investment from the public health reserve, which is critical to sort of start this off and I'm really delighted in the way that the council have engaged, they've come to VCS Leaders Forum to talk about how we invest that money and have a really good investment principles conversation that's taken us into the space of talking about how we invest in infrastructure and capacity building, you know, as well as we know organisations in communities and communities themselves need access to funds and investment. But there is a layer of work here to really get this off to a good start where we need to think about investing that money wisely. So the approach that's been taken to date about really looking at the options on that are really welcome and I think that's a really good starting point for us all, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Stephen and Helen, I think I'd really sort of echo the sentiments that they've got across. So firstly, thank you for making sure it wasn't just another survey, very welcome. And I think it is a really welcome opportunity to put communities at the centre of decision-making. We really welcome the early engagement and yeah, again, reiterating thanks to the officers that were involved. They were really open with us about, you know, what's the best way we can do this, how can we do this together? How can we get this right? And I think more work needs to be done to normalise that approach as we develop policies and practice going forward, but we felt very welcome and part of the process and an equal partner in that process too. We always appreciate too that, you know, progression needs to happen at pace, so we sort of recognised that, but I think there was a real thoroughness to the process, even though there was a sort of a bit of pace added to it and whilst we couldn't always get everyone in the room, I felt like the local authority did their best to do that. And that invitation for challenging scrutiny was there throughout from, you know, the fine detail through to kind of the overall approach. I think just in terms of like, yeah, moving forward, I think we have to think about the audience in this. It might seem explicit and obvious, but I think a lot of this strategy and plan at the moment talks to the sector and that's right and we need to think about how we communicate effectively with our wider communities and our residents. And I think there's just something about segmenting that I'm thinking about what that looks like in terms of that dialogue and that action. But ultimately, as Helen said, how do we ensure momentum, maintain trust and have impact? And effectively, how do we turn this into a call to action? Very, very warm words, but how do we ensure it has an impact? I think the city goals work, the emerging sort of cohesion work that's taking place are both things that we need to ensure read across on. I really want to see a shift to that really hyper-local governance, it happens in parts of the city, but I think there's an opportunity to build on good practice there and effectively ensure there's accountability and ongoing engagement as part of this implementation going forward. But yeah, really, really it's just to endorse the process and I am grateful to have been part of it, thank you.
Afternoon, members. And I concuss with what colleague I've said so far. We have in our hands an outstanding piece of strategy, the community strategy is outstanding for these reasons. Firstly, the active learning, the process has been very active, you had community and what the council officer truly believe and together we have our challenges, but we learn a lot from each other. Then the community, Rowan Elk, is well aware of this document and the officers as well. But the biggest challenge for me personally is how well this strategy will be factors into all different departments at the council so that when they approach the communities, they approach it in the spirit of the community strategy. We have learned so much through this exercise and I'm urging members here to strongly support the strategy, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I sat last, actually, so I don't need to really say anything because they've said it all, so I'm so relieved because I've got tired of standing up and speaking for the last two weeks. However, I just want to say thank you to Tom and Daniel and other people that have been involved. It's difficult to come out and hear what communities have to say and what their true feelings are about council services and question and sometimes interrogate the position of the local authority. So it was really good for our communities down in Fairvale Page, all to hear that the Sheffield City Council are looking at a strategy that's going to take into account voices in a way that maybe haven't been done in the past, and also how they can actively be involved. I mean, some of the voices around the table were Asian women who don't get to participate but can come to a safe space and speak, and I think some of their needs for listening to Daniel was very good in our setting, in particularly very sensitive to the needs and understanding of children with special needs or autism, spoken about things that affect their lives that they don't bring to the table or speak about but continue to suffer. So I thought that this opportunity of this Community Strategy where it gives the voice of helping the council really more than anybody to be able to use this report or use the findings from this report or use resources that they want to spend in communities in the right way that serves its people. And I think that it's our work and the work that we've all done collectively together will enable you to make decisions that really truly deeply impact on communities that have no way sent at grassroots. So and your team have been, Sheffield City Council officers have been really good in listening and understanding and interpreting the thoughts of our communities into this paper. So I fully recommend that this paper should be supported, and the voluntary sector's been keen playing that role. So I thought I wasn't going to say anything, so I better be quiet before I keep going on and on anyway. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for joining us today for those really positive remarks, but also for your work and the work of many others in helping to shape this strategy. So before we perhaps go any further, I think if we could share our appreciation for people who joined us today.
Thank you all very much. I think, you know, I'm struck by the themes that are coming through from your contributions, that this has been a process very much done with people, not to communities, and that is a commitment that we've spoken about regularly here in this chamber, this committee and across the councils, there in our council plan. But the process that you've articulated and been part of over the last year has really brought that to life and is an example of how we are living out those values and really actively listening, to use Olivier's phrase, to communities, taking that on board and making sure that the document before us reflects that. It speaks to our commitment to partnership working, recognising that the council does not have all of the answers, nor should attempt to try to come up with all of the answers. It is only by working in partnership that we know the needs of our communities and that we can together find the right approach. I'm really struck by the theme that's coming through a lot of those contributions, that today, whilst we're here to recommend and approve this strategy, this is not the end. This is the end of the beginning, it's the start of a lot of work that will now need to go forward, and a call to action, as Helen said, making sure that yes, whilst this is the last of our kind of tier-one strategies to put in place, it's not to kind of bolt on to the rest of the work that we've already been doing. This now needs to be properly built in and embedded throughout the work of the council, right from the process of designing this work through to the way in which we're working with communities. So this is very much about a way of working as it is about the outcomes that together we want to be able to achieve with and for communities. So I've seen a number of colleagues, lots of colleagues who want to speak unsurprisingly, so I'm going to take them in the order that I've seen them, which was councillor Bellbin, councillor Agentio, and then councillor Crossthorn, and then there will be more opportunities.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everybody for coming in and presenting today. I'm hugely encouraged basically to hear how you feel about the process that you've gone through as part of developing this strategy. I think we've had, probably had conversations over a number of years, but it starts to feel as if we are listening better and we are acting on our listening better from hearing, I think, Matt, you saying that you felt like an equal partner at the table. That's hugely important. Golden As, when you talk about the women who usually do not feel listened to but felt that they were listened to as part of this process, that feels hugely, hugely important. I do feel it's a sign that we are, as a council, we are getting better at this and that some of the perhaps things that we've said but not put into practice properly before, we are getting better at doing. I do think the process is hugely important. I know we've been through the process around the city goals, and I think there's been a lot of learning from that, and I think there's been an awful lot of input from people like yourselves who have put us in that position, if you like. It's not a case of the council having to encourage people because we have got fantastic people around our city who are already doing a fantastic job contributing to make it the city, the cities. A couple of general points about the strategy. I know, Tom, when we've been out and consulted on it, there's been, I suppose, a lot of the response has been around, well, are we actually going to deliver? And that speaks to what you were saying in particular, I think, Olivier, and about how we actually put this into action, and I think we have to be open and honest that this is, you know, this doesn't just mean that whole council snaps into acting perfectly around communities the whole time, and it's a big culture change for us. So I think there needs to be some recognition of that, and I know a lot of what people were feeding back as well, that they want to see the council out in their communities. We have to be more visible, so I'm interested perhaps, Tom, but on others' reflections on that as well. And then just on the grant funding, and Helen, you talked about this in particular, but I'm really interested to hear about your thoughts about how, first of all, what's the problem we're trying to tackle in terms of how we're commissioning now and how it can be better? A lot of you are in organisations that, you know, have been commissioned by the council, so, and what are your initial thoughts around co-designing, doing that better, and how we use that funding as that kind of Kickstarter to do things better in the future?
Great, thank you very much. Councillor Agentio, please.
Yeah, I don't have kind of questions, just some comments. First of all, thank you so much for all the work that's been going on. As members, I feel I've been also consulted a lot on this, and our kind of comments and input has been taken into consideration, so we also have felt very involved. I think I've kind of caught this under different kinds of strains, you know, in the leaders' group and then as an SRR member, and it has felt like officers have really taken on board whatever we were saying and, you know, reworded things. So I feel like very much on the same kind of wavelength as you. I think one of you said, how do we ensure that this approach is normalised? And this is our, and I know that we, as a local authority, are really trying to, you know, to change the, you know, our way of working. So since the city goal, we, you know, we've kind of changed a lot, the approach, but this is a good model to use, and I know that it's time-consuming, but it's like, it demonstrates that when you use sensitivity and have that equal partnership with people, and you don't just say the word but actually behave as an equal partner when you are in meetings, you can achieve a lot. And I just, like Olivier, I want to know how we translate this in practice and how we disseminate this approach in all our different silos in council, and, you know, how we'll build the trust that the sector doesn't always have in us by delivering on this strategy as an example. So thank you to everybody involved, and especially people in the community voluntary sector because they've had to take time after their day job to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Crossthorn, please.
Thank you, Chair. I remember sitting here when you first came to Strategy and Resources to ask to start the process on this, and I think the question that I asked then was, can you make sure that me as chair or whoever's the chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee is involved in this process? Yes, we've definitely been involved in the process. I think my email inbox is going to be a lot lighter now. But all that being said, that's a good thing. I think the amount that, we've made jokes about all the consultation and things, but the amount of times where we have strategists coming through the council that we can't remember that we've been consulted on. So I think it's a really good process that you've used this time because it has truly been cross-party, it's been collaborative, but it's also been cross-city and cross-community. So you've got lots of different views, and I've seen it evolve over time and seeing those views get sort of dropped into the draft as it's gone on has been really good for me to see as a councillor as well, to see the strategy take shape as it's gone on. And that includes taking on criticism as well. I think there was a discussion once about a survey that you were going to do, and somebody said, oh, but that might give the opportunity for people to criticise us. And I think it was Dan actually said, good, because we want that, we want to be able to learn. And to me, that's kind of what this whole strategy is about. It's about learning as an authority, because it isn't going to change overnight, the things that we do as a council. We are going to have to change the culture, and the strategy sort of sets the guidelines for doing that and sets us all in the same direction to be able to change the culture going forward. And I think, in summary, I think there's two points here really. It's about how the council interacts with its residents with every service that we deliver to make sure that we are thinking about the community impact on that. But then secondly, how we can trust our community leaders as well, because they have skills, expertise and knowledge, but we can say, actually, you're better at doing this than we are, so please take it off of us and go do it better than the council. So they're the two things that I'm really happy to see with this. So again, just wanted to say thank you for all the input that everybody's put in and all the officer time and cross-party collaboration on this as well.
Great, thanks very much. I'm going to, there's a few specific questions that have come up so far, but I'm going to take some more just to get further member contributions. I think just building on councillor Crossthorn's point, hopefully people would recognise that the culture has changed and is continuing to change. Councillors Dale, Otten and Johnson are the next three.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you to officers and colleagues from voluntary and community sector. I could sit here and talk all day about how wonderful voluntary and community sector is, and I absolutely truly believe that, and you know that because we've worked together for many years. It is really encouraging to hear from everyone how well the process has gone so far, and I feel it's really important that we've set really solid foundations to be able to move forward. Some people that aren't here though, I would like to thank, I'd like to thank Sheffield Futures, Sheffield Young Terras, Pittsmore Adventure Playground, our young people and youth cabinet, Longleyford Greens Youth Club, Low Edges Youth Club, U Mix and Westfield Youth Clubs, and also our youth voice team. I think, looking at the report, they are in there, I think that it's a good opportunity for further work in this area. That area does need to be built, the voice of our children and young people absolutely needs to be embedded within this strategy moving forward because they are also our citizens, and will be the adult citizens before we even know it. So I think that cultural shift will also encourage, it needs to be encouraged as well. I think really, a couple of questions and comments from here, I think Helen, you partially answered this anyway, and it's, you know, it's a 10-year strategy, and I'm interested to find out, particularly on behalf of young people, what the ongoing opportunities will be for further collaboration from them, because young people grow and keep moving on, and in 10 years it'll be another group of young people that will want to have an input into this as well. So how will that happen? And how, when it comes to the delivery plan, which you've all kind of alluded to as well, it's kind of how is that going to work and how is that going to, who's going to be doing it and what will that look like? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Otten, please.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. Welcome to the town hall, if you've not been here before. Thank you for all the work you've put into this, it's a great piece of work. Clearly, the strategy is high-level, it's aspirational, it's, you know, and it's wide in its scope, it's trying to achieve a great deal. And of course, that means is that the question of then how we actually achieve that, you know, which is, for me, is the really big question, obviously we're not really going into today, that for me, that's the acid test. How are we going to do it? How are we going to do it? And obviously, not obviously, I hope members and officers will take this away and ensure that the principles and values expressed in here and practices are borne out in the decisions we make going forward. Couple of observations beyond that. I'm not clear what the role of members of the council is. Now, as a councillor, I'm a representative of a community. If I do a bad job of it, I hope they will vote me out and elect somebody else. So that is, now, I'm not offering to take on all this work, obviously, you can't do a fraction of what is in here, but clearly we have a role within the scope of this strategy. So some clarity on what that is would be nice. The other thing, I mean, I appreciate, there's a very broad definition of what a community is at the beginning of the document, and it's correct, but some of the communities you identify that way are very difficult to get hold of and difficult to engage with. And so there's a sexual engagement, which is good, I agree with what's in there, there's learnings for us all in terms of the work that might be needed sometimes to engage. But take for example, from my life, the community of wild swimmers in Sheffield, of whom there are thousands, we are, would you believe, we are completely anarchic, you know? There is nobody you can ring up and say, what do the wild swimmers think about this? Because we all think different things. But it is a community, it is absolutely a community, and it needs to be engaged with. You know, when it's probably the amateur theatre people and other communities, I mean, I chair one group, I guess I can speak for them, I can't speak for any of the others. There was an umbrella organisation, it seems to be defunct at the moment. How do you engage? The other one, and I'm not sure if this is a community under the definition, the people, the regular users, participants in the night-time economy in the city centre, I think it is, under your definition, a community, and it should be. And I guess the more gregarious ones, they are kind of doing it together, aren't they? It's really important that we engage with them, particularly we've got work coming to my committee about safety in the night-time economy. They're the people we need to be speaking to more than anybody else. How do we do that? According to the principles of this document, how do we do that? So that's kind of my question, my observations on the strategy. I do have another point, which I do have to mention because there's a section on community infrastructure levy in there, and it's saying we should review the, you know, the process for that. And so I do have a couple of comments. Members and officers will be aware of our group's position on this over the years. Just three things I want that review to look at. One is, under the current system, the neighbourhood portion is frequently spent completely out of the area where it's raised. That's not what neighbourhood proportion should ever have been, that's a mistake, that needs to be fixed. Point two, the proportion of sill that goes to the neighbourhood elements is, in legislation it's a minimum, and we could always look at that being more than the minimum, it doesn't have to be always at the minimum. And then point three, the process for spending sill, neighbourhood sill that arises in neighbourhood plan areas, I think is, I'm still not clear what it is, I keep asking, I've not had it in writing what that process is, and there's some really good projects in Dorfley, which is a neighbourhood plan area, which we want to spend the money on, and I think it's getting held up due to unclarity of process. So can we have that sorted out? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jo. I have seen four members who would like to speak, and then I think I'm going to draw a line, just to check, I've got everybody, I've got councillors Miss Galhurst, Moynhan and Nas. Good, I'm quite, okay, in that order please. Councillor Miss, you've already spoken. No, you haven't, sorry. I apologise, you were on my list, I am very sorry. Councillor Johnson.
I know, you've used my name before, but no, I've not spoken on this. I'll try and be brief, thanks, I appreciate everyone wants to get in. So first, massive thanks to everyone who's here, everyone who's not here as well, because it's been a big undertaking. I have to say, I was sceptical when this started off, the idea about the council having a community strategy, partly because from the inside the fence, for many years, the council's relationship with communities has been of active distrust. Yeah, I know you're nodding there. I think what this shows is, it's not so much the outcome, and basically, the policy is fine, really worth supporting, we're not out of the woods yet, a long way to go, but the fact it's happened, and it's happened in this way, is the sign of success. And to me, it's actually very much like the city goals process, where it's not so much the outcome of what's outcome of what's on paper. It was the process that went through. It's been a huge resource that everyone here has put into, and it's been that process of thrashing out what we're actually saying. To me, it's important to have the definition of communities. Again, something I was sceptical that anyone would be able to pin down, but it's there, page 69, it's written now. It's really important for some of those things that I think councillor Otten was just referring to, the fact that actually, we need to have a definition of communities so we can identify who we're talking about. It's very easy for councillors saying, oh yeah, we were really in touch with our communities and we'll talk to our communities, without being clear about actually who we mean. But we need that to recognise as well that communities are often in conflict with each other, sometimes diametrically. They're sometimes diametrically in conflict with values that we hold. We have communities of pretty unpleasant people in the city. On this definition, they're communities. But by having this definition, we can recognise that, and that might help to clarify some thinking. So as councillors, we spend a lot of time sorting out conflicts between communities. So two particular questions. One is on the community infrastructure levy. It's good to go and nod to it in here. Again, it feels like it's been kicked down the line, because in particular, we've raised this for several years now. Well, we'll make the request that this is brought back as soon as possible, and I know it's a particularly thorny issue. The other request is just on the faith and belief charter. So this is a new innovation for the city and its welcome. I just wanted to ask if anyone can tell, what discussion there was about the recognition of the people who don't have faith, and again, reflecting the debates in Parliament about recognising and protecting faith and belief. There's an explicit reference to the lack of faith and the lack of belief in those circumstances. I'm just wondering if that's been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, we've got four members. If people could be relatively brief in their comments now, and then I wanna make sure that we've got time for people to come back and pick up some of the questions that have been specifically raised. Councillor Miss Call followed by councillor Hurst, please.
Thank you, Chair. I do have to respectfully disagree with councillor Otten and some of the points that I think he made about SILL there. I think it's very right that this document draws attention to how we do need to evolve some of the way that we use SILL. You know, I think in my mind, I think it's clear that if we change how we see communities in our city, and it's not just in a geographical sense, albeit that's still a part of the dimension here, then also we have to think about how we support those communities and their physical infrastructure that might, does not be located in one specific geographical location. I'm thinking, for example, homeless people in our city, how do we support physical infrastructure for that particular community? The LGBT community as well. So I think there are many, there are countless different examples here. And I think it's a good thing that we at least have a discussion about that, and it's a really grown-up thing to do. So thank you very much for really bringing this document to us today. You know, I think it's really, really welcomed. And I guess I think a little bit about kind of those people who are councillors here today. We are often left reflecting on why we became councillors, often quite late in the evening at a meeting that's going on for very many hours. But the reality for us, for many of us, is actually that we joined the council, we put ourselves up for election to change lives, to get things done and to lower inequality in this city. And I think it's probably important, and one of the reasons I really support this document, is that quite clearly, we can't do that alone. And that's why I'm really pleased that this strategy really gives us a framework for doing a lot of that. And I think it requires that shift in mindset about how we all work together, how we achieve those things, how we achieve our common goals together. And I think it's probably really important to spotlight a few of those things that I've seen in the report. And it's really interesting, the one that I saw on page 131, that strikes me as being particularly interesting. And it said, sounds good, but can you deliver? And I think it's important, and people have reflected a little bit on it today, that we don't downplay that level of cynicism in our city. I think Helen from VAS has talked about that. And actually, we all have to deliver across the voluntary sector, across the city council, across other public sector organisations, in order to be able to change our mindset and work with communities when it comes to delivering for people. And the other thing that I thought was particularly interesting was on page 100, sorry, the paging convention. It's quite interesting, but there's an interesting line. It says, communities in Sheffield are changing and changing rapidly. People feel left behind by these changes. And I was out in Gleedless in my ward knocking on doors today, and the common thread was certainly in support of that. And I think actually, that's one of the common issues that we face as a city, and other cities and other towns in this country do. People feel a lack of control. And that lack of control is really about their inability to have the freedom to be able to control some of those changes that are happening in their communities. So very much welcome this new strategy. I think people are right to be cynical, because actually, we are all jointly as a city now responsible for delivery. But it is about giving people that control, that freedom, to be able to lead their own lives and be in control of what's happening in their communities and their own destiny. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank officers for the hard work that they've put into shaping the development of this strategy and all the community groups. I know Tom said that it seemed like a long time ago that this was brought here. But I think the work that has been done and the journey that's been gone on in the past 12 months has been a significant and very large piece of work. And it seems to have moved, I hate the word at pace, it seems to have moved quickly. And we seem to have moved together on this. I would, picking upon the cynicism of some of the comments that have been fed back, I would throw down this challenge. It's up to us now, all together, to make it work, isn't it? And I hope we can, for the benefit of the city as a whole. Thank you for your hard work so far. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Moynihan, please.
Thanks all. I think that it's important this strategy is seen as it should be. It should be flexible. The thing that impresses me most about, and my experience in the voluntary sector, is that it can change quickly, react to circumstances, change course, whatever. If something isn't working, it does it differently. That's very different from the council structures, where you set out on a course, you're doing this in year one, this in year two, these are your KPIs. That's not how the community works. If something isn't working, we look at doing it differently. That is not failure. It's actually called adaptation. And that's what we need to remember here. And things don't fail. We learn from them and we do things differently. And I think that's so important that we all bear that in mind, because the cultures are very different. The other thing I think is important is what Helen referred to, is the links to the other strategies, and particularly the economic agenda. The only thing that changes life in any community, however you define it, is access to opportunities, opportunities for learning, opportunities for skills, and opportunities for employment. That changes lives and it changes families. So we've got to ensure there are economic links. And we've got to link that into an effective commissioning and procurement strategy. Otherwise, we're not going to change the way. And the services need to be co-designed. Otherwise, we're not going to change delivery. We're not going to change the lives of the people it's intended to reach. So thank you very much. And I don't think you're cynical. You're impatient. I think you wouldn't be doing the jobs you're all still doing if you were just cynical. If you weren't ambitious for change and wanting to improve things, you wouldn't be doing the job you're doing. So thank you all for carrying on with that passion and commitment.
Thank you very much. Councillor Nas, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing the report to us today. I welcome the community strategy and the recognition that strong empowered communities are key to Sheffield's future. It's encouraging to see an emphasis on partnership working. So I'm really pleased to see all of you here today. But given the deep inequalities that still exist between different parts of the city, including areas like Donn and Tinsley, it's vital that this strategy leads to real measurable change on the ground. Communities that have faced long-term disadvantage need to feel the benefits directly, not just in words, but in resources and support. And my question is, you know, given that the community strategy, what impact will that have on local area committees? Will this be a new way of working? And the reason I ask is because the local area committees play a really important role in engaging with communities. So what does this mean when this strategy is implemented for our committees? Thank you.
Right. Thank you all very much. Really helpful set of contributions. And I think on such a significant strategy, which will shape the work of every committee of the council, it's important that members have got a chance to share their views and ask questions today. There's some questions that have come from members, but also some themes. There's a question around the commissioning side and this second recommendation about the use of public health funds and what will change as a result of that. There's a set of questions which are around delivery and the next steps, and how we can work together to continue the process that colleagues have so articulately set out, and work with communities to build trust. There's a specific question that's come up around young people and how we're making sure that we're continuing to involve the voices of children and young people in our work. Questions around the role of members, which link, I suppose, to the role of lax as we go forward. And some of these are big questions that are going to take time for us to work through. So not necessarily expecting us to have answers here today, but it's right that we raise them. I think there's a helpful point around kind of how communities are changing and the degree to which people can have control in their lives over what matters to them. And then there's a specific question, which sort of sits outside the strategy, but is in the report, which is about the community infrastructure levy, and that's come up a few times. I think it's worth just saying on this, that it is not for lack of trying that we've got to this point. There have been multiple conversations, as colleagues around the table know, in order to try to find a settled way forward. The recommendation now is going to formalise that and say we need to do a full review. And it will take into account all the different views of members from different groups on this. But the situation as it currently stands is not sustainable. We need to find a better way of utilising community infrastructure levy funding for all communities in the city. And so that will be something that I'm keen that we make progress with quickly. But the comments today have been heard, and we'll go into shaping the next steps on this. So look, I'm gonna sort of hand back to Tom and Dan first perhaps, and then if, I guess, if there's any particular points you want to comment, I'm keen that you sort of have the opportunity to just respond to anything that might sort of feel like it needs picking up by yourselves. And then we'll come to the recommendations. So Tom first, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I'll try and, really helpful, Chair, you grouped those themes together. So I'll kind of try and work through some of those themes. And I'll probably ask colleagues, and particularly Helen, maybe to come in on the commission and procurement question, because I know that was very specifically directed towards Helen as well. I'll just try and cover the other stuff and give you, come back to you Helen, if that's okay. So delivery and next steps. I think it's probably fair to say that, you know, that is what we are now focused on, subject to the decision today. We have an empowered communities board internally within the council. We are talking to the sector about how we make sure that doesn't just end up being another conversation just in the council again. But that empowered communities board will oversee the initial priorities that are set out in the section in this strategy, in terms of the work we need to do around engagement, which has already started to some extent with members, the review we need to do in local area committees, and a number of other pieces of work that are already set out in the document, you know, our intent around locality working and neighbourhood working and getting into communities. So there are some next steps there set out. But the next thing we need to do through that board is to really start to flash out the action plan that gets us to the end point in terms of some of those pieces of work. So we're really focused on that. Young people and how we make sure their involvement continues, I suppose, you know, there is a commitment there to do that. I know, right at the start, almost the first session we had on the community strategy, it was really clearly articulated to us, not just by members, but actually by a number of other people outside of the council, that young people needed to run right through all of this. So we are well engaged in terms of the youth engagement work the council has had in place, and the commitment is there to continue that as we go forwards. I've just mentioned the fact that we have committed within this strategy is a very specific piece of work in terms of a review of the local area committees. It's not just a review of local area committees, though. It's about our future neighbourhood governance and what we want that to look like as an authority. There's lots of work nationally going on around that as well in terms of intent, and we're gonna have to decide how we want to do that locally. So the role of members will clearly be within that space. And I guess to some extent, you know, this committee and members will determine actually the role of members and how far you want to take that in terms of the approach around neighbourhood governance in the future. But that is a specific piece of work that we've articulated in the strategy. And then the final one, and it's almost the most difficult question to answer, to be honest, the thing about changing communities and control over people's lives. And what do we, how do we get to a place where people in communities genuinely feel like the council is doing what matters to communities? I suppose what I would say, and this is a bit, you know, kind of a bit woolly, but it's sort of the point of the strategy really. The entire thing that sits, you know, right at the top of this strategy is the fact that we acknowledge, and it isn't just in Sheffield, by the way, this, I think you go to pretty much any city in the country and find this, that our communities do not necessarily trust the council. They don't necessarily think we are listening. They don't necessarily think we will do the things we will do. The purpose of this strategy is to try to bridge that gap, actually, is to try to find a way to build some of that trust back up within communities. And then hopefully, people will feel like they have more control over their lives in their communities. And then it will have all the benefits that come from that, including all the things that we know are driving, things like community cohesion issues in the city and all this stuff. So a bit of a slightly woolly answer, but I think it's right at the heart of everything we're trying to do within the strategy. Helen, I don't know whether you specifically just wanted to reflect on the kind of commissioning question that came up earlier. I know that was in particular on kind of grant funding and your thoughts about the problem that we're trying to tackle here and your initial thoughts on what, around co-design and how we might do things better?
Yeah, I think the initial conversation we've had around commissioning of the kind of investment that's been offered up, which is a one-off investment from public health reserves, has sort of looked at the options of how we might invest that. And from the continuum, which is, we could look to commission that across the sector and to sort of spread that out and smooth it out in quite small grant packages to the very large voluntary sector that we have in the city, three and a half thousand kind of groups and organisations at the last count. But it wouldn't go very far. But there is a need, you know, there is a need for core funding for organisations. So that's kind of one end of the continuum. The other end of the continuum is to recognise that to deliver this strategy, we have to work radically differently. And that our muscle memory is all in that space of small grants and, you know, the way things have been done hasn't been working. We're not a resilient sector. We're on our knees as a sector. I think we've just stepped into so much space that will service space and are holding on to so much that we're in a really difficult position. But I think we have to be quite brave. And I think the other end of that continuum is to invest in some infrastructure about how we work differently. And I think to reflect from the sector's point of view, we're having lots of conversations in VCS Leaders Forum about, there are gaps. There are communities that are not well-served by the voluntary sector. The voluntary sector in some spaces had to really shift and focus on specific things that are around aid and kind of responsive reactiveness. And we recognise that we need to do that work as a sector in partnership with the council. So the commissioning piece becomes a bit of a broader conversation about actually, if we have this initial investment, how do we leverage that in a really meaningful way to actually develop different ways of working together and enable organisations, partnerships, collaborations, cooperatives to leverage in other resources? And it isn't just financial resources. It is about spaces. We have to make spaces where we can act differently. Well, we need to open up spaces to people. So the point about hope and control is where do we, where do we start to activate some of that? We've had a very lively debate in VCS Leaders about the need for investment in community development, and I'm sure Steve will speak to this. We've, you know, that whole area of work has really been hollowed out. Youth development has been really hollowed out. Actually, to address some of the things we need to, in what communities are telling us, we need some of that fundamental investment into those people who are in and of those communities, who can work with people and activate some hope, some imagining how things can be different, some organising, but also in that, some control. So getting a bit of, you know, age- but also in that some control, sort of getting a bit of, you know, agency. And it can be very, very small things, you know, this is a 10-year strategy. But I think the conversations we're having is like, look, we have lots of options open to us, but let's be really smart and strategic about where we start and where we lay some groundwork because we've hollowed out a lot of it and we really need to sort of re-thread some of those things. So I think that's probably what I'd say on commissioning at this point. But as I said, I really welcome the fact that we are having the full range of that conversation and we will hold kind of the accountability and responsibility for how those decisions are made.
Great, thank you very much Helen. Colleagues, are there any brief final remarks anyone wanted to make before we come to the recommendations?
councillor Joe Otten referred to, and you were talking about your community of wildswimmers. And how can wildswimmers kind of, you know, gain some sort of traction and influence on some of these processes? Well, I think part of the thinking behind the strategy is that we want to change circumstances so that people, so it's more comfortable, it's more accessible, it's more open. So that the wild, because I think the wildswimmers actually have a responsibility to themselves and if they've got any issues or concerns or queries or complaints, they've got a route to get those addressed. So, but part of the strategy is about making sure that there is an environment so the wildswimmers will feel comfortable, safe, secure and confident that they'll get a good airing from whoever it is and they'll get a response and that whatever solution will be worked upon together. You know, so that's part of what we're trying to create in terms of an environment where the strategy can sit and work comfortably.
Thank you very much. Matt please.
Yeah, just on the definition of communities point. I think it may go without saying, but I think ultimately we may spend a long time trying to get to the bottom of how many communities we've got and how we define them. But I think as long as we're focused on addressing underlying inequalities and focusing on marginalised communities, I think this is what this strategy is about at its heart. So I think we just have to have that in mind. And I think just building on the points around commissioning, I think just recognising we do know how to do it and how to do it well and we're doing it in this city. And there's examples, for example, things like the People Keeping Well Programme where it's, we're treated as an equal partner. The programme's designed with us, we're listened to and we can shape what that programme looks like. In other words, this is the challenge we've got before us. How can we work with you as a set of communities to find the solution? And how can we, how can we ensure whatever programme or intervention we put in place is the right one? So there's plenty of good practice. The trick is always how can the local authority act with more consistency in that space? And make sure there's more examples of good practice. Engage, this strategy process has been a key kind of part of that. Engage with us early, design with us, listen to us and you're more likely to find the right solution. But I think it's already there, it's just about building on the foundations.
Just a quick one Chair, please. Thank you Matt. Sheffield is a very complex city. Just imagine a city with more than 286 ethnicities. Then to improve outcome for everyone for 286 ethnicity, it's not easy. It's a challenge for any type of leadership and that's the problem that we're facing. But I'm sure this current community strategy that we have with the processes that's gone through can maximise this, can minimise the inequality that's currently in Sheffield. Then I'm sure that we can do it together.
Great, thank you all very much. I think Kate, you wanted to just come in.
Yeah, just checking the microphones calmed itself down. Thank you. I don't often come in, but I did just want to say a few points. Firstly, obviously to share my huge thanks to partners and colleagues in the Voluntary Community Faith and Social Enterprise sector for the time and energy and honesty you've brought to this process. But I really did just want to say thank you and pay tribute on behalf of our organisation, our team, to colleagues in the council who've led this work. Councillor Moynihan referred to the incredible agility of those 3,000 voluntary community sector organisations. Some of you will have heard me talk about the idea of this city as a kind of flotilla out on the ocean towards our goals and the city goals. And in that analogy, the council can sometimes seem like the proverbial oil tanker. But what changes it is the leadership and the energy and bravery of, yes, elected members providing that strategic direction for us, but also council officers who are willing to go and sit in those spaces and ask difficult questions. So I did just want to say a big, big thank you to the team who've done this work and recognise that it's something we don't do often enough. And to give you the assurance that this is part of the journey of change we're on as an organisation where the conversation, the examples Matt's just described should be more of what you see and the development of this strategy should be what you are come to expect and even take for granted in the future. So thank you very much to the team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely right, thank you very much. So we've got some recommendations ahead of us. We are recommended to approve the draft community strategy which is set out to support the next steps in delivering the strategy. This committee is also recommended to approve the establishment of a grant fund of 2.2 million using funds from the Public Health Grant Reserve, as set out in the report. To note that officers will now carry out work to review the governance arrangements in relation to community infrastructure levy, which we've touched on. To endorse the faith and belief charter between the council and faith organisations in the city. And then to receive an update on progressing, implementing the strategy, those important next steps during 2028 and agree that we will refresh commitments and action at that time. Are members happy to support those recommendations? Thank you all very much. And just to add final thanks to you all for being here today. It's really made for a much richer conversation and I think a demonstration of how we want to do things in partnership going forward. So thank you all very much for taking time out. Thank you. Right, we're now going to move swiftly on to item number nine. And we've got again colleagues who are joining us for this item. And so if you want to come and take your places. Great, well, thank you all very much. This item is entitled Violence Against Women and Girls and it sets out the Domestic and Sexual Abuse Annual Report for 2025 and the White Ribbon Accreditation for the council. Without further ado, because I'm conscious of the time, let me hand over to Sam and to Alison to both just introduce yourselves first. We'll hear introductions from our guests and then I'll come back to Alison and Sam to lead off the conversation.
Thank you Tom. Afternoon everybody. Yeah, I'm Sam Martin. I'm not the head of commissioning, I'm an assistant director of commissioning and partnerships today. So good to see you.
Afternoon everybody, Alison Higgins, Domestic and Sexual Abuse Commissioning Manager.
Good afternoon everybody, I'm Wayne Grocott, I'm the Service Manager at Cranston and we deliver the Domestic Abuse perpetrator Intervention Service.
Afternoon everybody, I'm Diane Johnson, I'm Detective Superintendent of Sheffield.
Hi everybody, I'm Katie Lewis, I'm the Regional Manager for IDAS, which is the Independent Domestic Abuse Service. And we support victims and survivors of domestic abuse.
Thank you all for being here today. So Sam, Alison, if I could hand back to you to just briefly introduce the item and then we'll have a chance to hear from our guests. And I suggest Katie, we come to you first if that's okay.
Thank you Tom. And I guess first test, we've managed to get the speakers working reasonably well so far. So that's a good test for us all. Chair, if I just precede the conversation about this item, I'm just reminding everybody and I guess anybody that might be listening on the webcast that we are, although we're not going to talk about in detail about particular cases, we're talking about a subject that has a significant impact on lots of people around the city. So it's an opportunity for anybody who's listening either away from here or in the room to prepare themselves for that as they need to do. So I won't spend too much time going back over what you've introduced Chair, but there are two elements to the report. Obviously, the annual report around the work of the Domestic Abuse Strategic Partnership. The committee agreed the council's role in the Domestic and Sexual Abuse Strategy last year at committee. So this is the first annual report which summarises the whole range of activity that's been happening across the city that the council either runs itself or commissions or that other partners do as part of the overall agenda. And as you know, the agenda is, can only be delivered by a whole range of stakeholders working together. I'm very proud of the way that we do that in Sheffield. So that's the first bit of the item. The second item is to formally agree that the council signs for re-accreditation with the White Ribbon Campaign for the next three years. We need to do that in December. So this is an opportunity for us to formally agree that we'll sign up to that campaign. So I guess maybe it is useful to hand straight over to Katie to talk a little bit about the work that IDAS does and because I know that you do need to go.
Yeah, apologies that I need to nip out in about five, 10 minutes. So like I say, we run the Independent Domestic Abuse Services across the city, which is largely funded by Sheffield City Council. We've got two contracts with Sheffield City Council, one being the Safe Accommodation Contract, which we co-deliver in partnership with Sheffield Women's Aid. They have two large refugees, women's only refugees across the city and we've got a number of dispersed properties that any one person fleeing from domestic abuse can be rehoused there. We've got 33 properties at the moment, we're looking to expand those to 40 across this financial year. And we've got an IDVA community contract, which, an IDVA is an independent domestic violence advisor. They support victims of any gender that have experienced domestic abuse. We've got about 30 members of staff on that contract in Sheffield, supporting a large number of people. We're in our second year of that contract. We're fortunate enough to win the contract again for a second time. But IDAS have been running for a large number of years. We were born up in North Yorkshire, we started life as York Women's Aid and expanded to be IDAS and opened our remit into supporting any gender rather than just women and girls. We're commissioned to administer the MARAC service. So MARAC is multi-agency domestic abuse conference. We get clients referred into the MARAC service that are at high risk of imminent harm and death. So we administer that and I've got a representative on the panel, that meeting's there to safety plan and look at immediate kind of safety options for clients going through that service. My mind's gone blank, what else do we do? We've got a training element as well, we're commissioned to deliver a wide range of domestic abuse training across the city. And we offer a DARE project as well, which is Domestic Abuse Routine Inquiry, which has been a really successful kind of training arm that we run in Sheffield. We've done particularly well with that in Sheffield. We've had a lot of buy-in from health services, particular GPs, where we train GPs to make sure that they are offering routine inquiry every available opportunity with people. We've had a lot of positive praise in recent domestic homicide review panels around that, which has been fantastic and we're continuing to deliver that.
Brilliant, thank you so much Katie for joining us today, for sharing some details of the really important work that you do in the city. Hand over to other partners, I don't know who's going next.
Domestic abuse clearly remains, thank you for that. Clearly remains a priority. Here in Sheffield, we've strengthened our approach to tackling that domestic abuse through our enhanced partnership working and improved our information sharing. We've introduced a daily triage meeting with the IDAS service to ensure those timely risk assessments, early interventions and more efficient preparation for our MARACs. This proactive process allows, like Katie said, those safeguarding measures to be implemented swiftly and consistently. And in addition to that, we have also established strong links with Wayne and Cranston, enabling the sharing of intelligence and monitoring the repeat of high-risk offenders, which has proved really successful. And together, those measures have improved our victim safety, reduced delays in decision-making and enhanced our collective ability to manage the risk across our partnerships. So we've done some really good work this year, which we're extremely proud of.
Yeah, welcome everybody. So yes, I'm Wayne Grocott, I'm the Service Manager at Cranston. So we are a commissioned service across the whole of South Yorkshire. We're commissioned by the full local authorities and SIMCA, so obviously within Sheffield as well. And a little bit of background about Cranston, so Cranston themselves are a national charity, started out in substance use. But as we know, when it comes to domestic abuse, the intersectionality and multiple disadvantage falls within the domestic abuse and the strong links. I sort of looked at just now, I think that this is more or less the trinity of the core of domestic abuse services to have victim services, victim support services, criminal justice and perpetrator interventions. I think the only sort of element that's missing is families and children, but that again comes within IDAS. So our remit is to work with any individual aged 16 and above that's been identified as using domestic harmful behaviours, abusive, controlling, violent. And we deliver predominantly group work. So we have a group that runs in Sheffield at the moment at Healy Parish Church, which the commissioners have been to. And the programme that we deliver to the core, the most, it'd be no great surprise that the majority of referrals we get through are men. And we will allocate them to the Men and Masculinity Programme, which is a 24-session. It's almost a six-month commitment, group work where they look at attitudes, beliefs, behaviours. And what we do is we encourage peer challenge within that as well.
Thank you very much. Alison, before I open it up, is there anything you wanted to say at this point?
Just to say that the providers are fantastic. The training that IDAS provides gets, we train about 1,000 people a year and we always get fantastic reviews of that training. And also just to big up the work that Cranston does, because I think that the, it's such a difficult thing to try and change people's behaviour. And for the people who go on that course and stick to it, you know, it doesn't look like it's huge numbers. But when you think about somebody's got to commit to 24 weeks, it's an amazing commitment and it's amazing to get the people through. And if you talk to their staff, they're just so impressive in terms of how they're trying to deal with those people and keep them engaged. And I think it's just really, really valuable work.
Thank you all very much for joining us today and for sharing the details of the work that you're doing together in the city. I've seen a couple of councillors who want to come in, I've got three in the first instance. So councillor Bellbin, councillor Agencio and councillor Otten and then we'll pause there.
Thank you. And thank you especially to our guests for coming in and for all the work you're all doing. I know there's, you know, when you look through the report, there was huge, huge amounts of work being done by your services as well as by council services and enormously grateful for it. You referred there Wayne to, there being the trinity, if you like, of services, which I think is a nice way of putting it. And unfortunately, and I have a feeling I said this when this report came to us last year as well, and it's absolutely not criticism because I know the funding is very restrictive for this. But unfortunately, you know, the way the funding goes is that the funding that does go into perpetrators is a tiny, tiny proportion compared to what is going into the other services. And I do think it's really incredible work that you're doing and really much needed. So I'm very grateful to you for coming today. We often talk, when we're talking about this kind of work, about prevention and unfortunately, a lot of what we're talking about here is reactive, isn't it? It's reacting to what goes on. And I just wondered if you could say from any of the services or yourselves, Sam and Alison, about work that we're doing perhaps in schools and things like that in order to try and get ahead of having to deal with domestic violence. And, you know, I know again, it's incredibly complex work this, so I'm not trying to minimise and say that there are easy answers, but it'd be interesting to hear that. And I also wanted to ask on the White Ribbon Reaccreditation. And again, thank you for including the White Ribbon Action Plan in there. I think what you can see in that, there's quite a lot of blank spaces, isn't there? In terms of things that we wanted to do that we haven't perhaps achieved. I'm really happy to go ahead again for the reaccreditation. I think it's so important that we are out there and particularly that our male colleagues are out there banging the drum on the issue of sexual abuse and domestic violence. So really. So really, really want to go for that. But I would, I'd really hope that we don't end up with another report where there's lots of blank spaces that we're thinking about. What can we realistically achieve? If we can't achieve everything, what's the most important things we can achieve? So I just wondered if you could comment on those things, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bellbin. I know some people have got limited time today, so if you do need to nip out, that's absolutely fine. Councillor Argentio.
Yes, first of all, thank you for coming. And it's really kind of good to have people that work on the ground. So we're really, really pleased that you could be here. Like, you know, I want to echo some of the stuff that councillor Bellbin said. Yeah, my first two things were prevention, the education element of it. And just going back to some of the conversations that we've been having in the Violence Against Women and Girls Group, which I attend, at least the in-person meeting, we have them here every quarter. The meetings are monthly, but the ones in person are every quarter here at Town Hall. And some of the conversation we've been having is what kind of support system young men have. Because of the kind of violence that women are systematically subjected to, we have better support system between ourselves. But young men, I fear, don't have that support system. So they are more vulnerable to influences that might be inappropriate and grow, you know, grow up with, listen to stuff online, for example. So how can we create the conditions where young men can be supported in developing healthy relationships? And how can we support parents through maybe the family hubs to raise particularly boys that can develop those healthy relationships? So that we can intervene early and prevent people becoming perpetrators of domestic violence? Because we will know that the vast majority of violence against women and girls happen from someone they know rather than a stranger. And also I just want to plug the monthly vigil outside Town Hall at 5.45. On the first Thursday of the month, there is a vigil where the names of all the women that have died in the last month because of violence are read out loud. So if you can attend, that would be great.
Thank you, councillor Otten, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing this to us. Completely agree with the report, support the work you're doing. The reason I put my hand up was actually to take advantage of the situation to possibly pick your brains on the, we have a piece of work before our committee on Safety of Women and Girls of the Nighttime Economy. And it's obviously, it's referred to the White Ribbon stuff, that's part of it. We've also got a licensing policy coming to us in November, that's almost completely drafted now, so it's very difficult to add anything. But I hope you've had the opportunity to feed into that where it's relevant. I appreciate it's not the domestic setting, but I think it is, obviously it's a related area. If you have any reflections you think would be useful for us, please let us know.
Okay, before I go back to the colleagues, are there any more members who would like to come in? No? Okay, in which case, let me hand back first to Sam.
Thank you, yeah, they're really helpful, supportive comments and also some really good questions there. So I guess one of the ones I was going to pick up first was the point about prevention work and awareness raising, which is, I think we acknowledge is really important and it was a really key part of the strategy as well. There's some really good work going on in some of our youth services and in some of the schools around healthy relationship work. Alison, there's something you were going to mention about the event that we've got coming up this month, is it next month?
Yeah, actually on White Ribbon Day on the 25th of November, there's a celebration event planned for education. So, and I think Meredith Dixon Teisdale is going to attend it and also somebody nationally from White Ribbon. And we've got nine or 10 schools that are going to showcase the positive work they're doing in this space. And various, all the other schools are invited in order to sort of learn from the showcasing of that good work and the positive action that schools can take. So that feels like a real step forward for us in Sheffield. Learn Sheffield themselves have been doing lots of work in this area. They did a piece of work over the last year, doing small group work in schools and youth settings with boys and young men on attitudes around being boys and young men, attitudes on gender, attitudes to women. And really what they found was that boys and young men need that space to be able to have those conversations without being judged, in order that they can be explored, picked apart and the why questions can all be asked. And so that report is coming to the Safer Sheffield Partnership next, in December. But it is, there's been a learning event as well, but if anybody wants to see the report, we're very happy to share it. So should I do the Safety of Women and Girls? So yes, we are revising the Safety of Women and Girls Charter with the Violence Against Women and Girls Forum. And we have got a new draft, we'd be very, very happy to share with councillors and show you where we're up to with it. The plan is to get it signed off in December, I hope that fits your timescale. But we've been doing lots of consultation on it and we've got more to do.
I think just on the point about prevention as well, I think it's a really good point that some of the intervention work with victims and perpetrators, is it self-preventative? Because as we know, young men learn from their fathers about what the right behaviour is towards women. And young women learn what is acceptable behaviour from the family environment that they can be in. So if we can intervene with perpetrators and with victims and stop that cycle of violence, if you like, being sort of perpetrated further down into future generations, that's also a really important part of the kind of reactive work that we do as part of the system. I think the, you know, you picked up the night time economy question. I think the point about supporting parents, I think is a really good one. And I think we picked that up through some of the healthy relationships and the schools work as well. So some really good work that goes on there through the work that have learned Sheffield and schools. I think they were mostly the points that I picked up from the question, so yeah, thank you very much folks.
No, not at all, thank you. Wayne, Diane, is there anything further you wanted to add?
Yeah, you'll soon learn, I've always got something to say. I think to councillor Bellbin's point, yes, I think resources and funding is always, always important to look at. And I think what's important also is we know how tight things are financially. And one of the things as a Service Manager delivering perpetrator work is not to fall into the trap of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So at the moment, there still absolutely needs to be that same level of investment in victim survivor support. And that victim survivor support and victim's voice is at the centre of everything we do. And just to put it into some perspective, I mean, some of the sort of measures of success that we've had recently, and I don't know if there was going to be any questions around that, is for, across the county, for the first 200 individuals that completed intervention, we did a piece of work with South Yorkshire Police. And of those individuals that were known to the police before for domestic related offences, there was a 73, 74% reduction in re-offending. And for the individuals that weren't known to the police before, so the whole cohort of the 200, there was 86% of those were not known up to 12 months after completion. We also complete an exit survey with, so we provide an attached victim survivor service as well, along in partnership with IDAS. And I think it's important that we don't just measure safety, that we also measure that feeling of safety. And by far, the results that we get balance between 80 and 90% of victim survivors feel safer up on exit. I think coming back to the early intervention as well, I think that's sort of the theme that keeps us cropped up. Up until recently, we were delivering a children and young persons service called Level Up, which worked, who works with 11 to 15-year-olds. So it's a slightly different remit. The majority of young people that fell into that remit were what we call cat versus child adolescent to parent violence abuse. And the majority of the young people we worked with were young men and boys who had experienced and been exposed to domestic abuse within the home and then gone on to repeat some of those behaviours towards mum, and mum was a single parent. So I think that's where it is important to, yes, as Sam was saying, it's not just about those perpetrators improving their own behaviour, but also unlearning and us challenging those inherited sort of behaviours. I think coming back to what councillor Otten was saying as well, it's quite, for me, it was quite poignant that the agenda item before was on about communities and a community strategy. Because when it comes to domestic abuse, that's the only way that we will deal with it, is a collaborative, combined community strategy. So I think that's where that fits in with, because what we find with the majority of domestic abuse and the night time economy is that it's around male privilege and men feeling that it's acceptable to behave in that way. And I think that's where there's, if we think of it as a Venn diagram, that's the big overlap and it's that community approach.
Thank you all very much. And those statistics you mentioned there about your results are hugely helpful. Councillor Bellman?
Sorry Chair, I just wanted to come back to the question about the White Ribbon Action Plan.
Yeah, so the action plan, I mean, it's intended to be a work in progress, so there are some things that we've still not done yet. That's not necessarily to say that we're failing, I guess, as a council, because we did set ourselves some pretty ambitious targets to get through. And I guess part of the purpose of re-accreditation is to make sure we can continue to deliver those things. Yeah, but yeah, we've really, and it's a whole, I think the White Ribbon thing's really, really good from my perspective, because it's a whole council thing, which is, as we found with the community strategy work we were talking about earlier on, it's really hard to get the whole council to do something. It's not just about one officer going, right, everyone do this, it's about that culture change, which inevitably takes an awful long time and a lot of hard work, as is going on by lots of individual people across the council, including councillors themselves, and I know a whole bunch of councillors have signed up themselves to be individual champions or ambassadors on the White Ribbon Campaign. And hopefully more will by the time we get to White Ribbon Day this year as well.
Thank you very much, it's encouraging to hear about the event you mentioned next month with schools. Any details that could be shared with relevant members, I'm sure that would be appreciated. Right, so we've got some recommendations to conclude our conversation today, that this committee is recommended to note the range of activities and challenges presented in the Domestic and Sexual Abuse and Violence Against Women and Girls Annual Report and the White Ribbon Action Plan Update Report to thank the statutory and voluntary sector partners and other stakeholders who help us as a city to address the harms caused by domestic and sexual abuse and violence against women and girls. And I think we absolutely have done that today, need to keep on doing that. Reaffirm the council's commitments tackling violence against women and girls and approve the application for the council to re-accredit with the National White Ribbon Campaign. Our members happy to support those recommendations. Great, thank you and thank you very much for joining us today, it's hugely appreciated, thank you. Right, we are then moving swiftly through to item number 10, which is the Sheffield International Strategy. And for this item, we're joined by Nick Hamilton, our Lead for International Matters at the City Council. Nick, thank you very much for joining us today. And if I could ask you to briefly introduce yourself and then the report before us, that would be fantastic, thank you.
Certainly Chair, thank you. I feel a little bit lonely here, I apologise, I've not brought anybody to accompany me. I'm Nick Hamilton, I'm the council's international lead and I also head up the inward investment team. And today you have before you the international strategy that has been drafted, covering the period 2025 to 28. I would like to put on record that this has been, we've engaged a lot of partners in terms of getting to this stage, the universities, the college, Learn Sheffield, DBT, SIMCA and various council departments. Unlike some previous strategies we've had, this is not just a trade and investment strategy. It covers a multitude of different areas. And the thinking behind it is it's not just the council's responsibility, it's actually working in partnership and collaboration with other areas of the city, other organisations to achieve some of the aims here. We've got limited resources as a council, clearly if we put the pieces together, the sum is much greater as a whole. There's a number of themes set out in the strategy and they include collaboration with some of our principal partner cities in terms of looking at shared challenges. For instance, we have 25 plus partner city relationships around the world. And some of those are very, very active and as cities we are dealing with similar challenges and issues. And hopefully we can actually collaborate and learn from each other in responses to climate change or homelessness or whatever it is. There's also a theme focused on supporting our universities and their development in terms of international students. They provide vibrancy and culture to the city and there's also an economic impact to them being here. There's also a theme around balancing the visitor, supporting the visitor economy. There is a theme around encouraging trade and investment, growing global citizens. We are the UK's first city of sanctuary, we need to, you know, acknowledge that and we have over 120 languages that are spoken here in the city. There's also an angle around strengthening civic links. As I mentioned just now, we have at least 25 relationships with cities on a formal basis. We need to strengthen those, you know, make, you know, opportunities from them going forward. And this isn't to be done in isolation, the plan is all about actually linking it to existing strategies that are already out there, the council plan, city goals, et cetera, et cetera. And just to give you a few examples, just very briefly, in terms of some of the things we're doing already. We're working with both universities in terms of student projects. I was actually on a Teams call yesterday with the Boreham University of Applied Science and Sheffield Hallam University in terms of doing some shared student challenges and getting students from each of the two cities to actually collaborate. We're working with the Company of Cutlers and the Chamber of Commerce in terms of exploring a trade mission for businesses next year, potentially going out to China. There's a lot of activity already going on, both in my area, if you like, but also across the council, different departments. And it's trying to pull that together and be more transparent in terms of where we are. I think the only other thing to say is, obviously this is the third piece of the commission that this committee asks to be done. So we did a review of our international relations to start with. We then developed a partner city policy and then we have led to the Sheffield International Strategy. One other thing I'd just like to say before I conclude is just to put on record my thanks to Rob Swarbrick, who was a graduate trainee, I know we have a couple of new graduate trainees over here in the corner today who've just started. You know, he was really helpful in terms of pulling that together, so thank you.
Thank you very much, echo that thanks. Also thanks to you Nick, for your work to develop this strategy and also to deepen and build our connections with cities and places around the world. Sheffield is a global and growing city and it is strategies like this that will help us to have a solid foundation to be able to deepen those connections with places around the world. So I'm going to now open it up for any reflections, any comments, any questions from colleagues? Councillor Moynihan?
Thank you for this Nick, it's really comprehensive. It's the first time that we've seen civic, cultural and trade and investment strategies brought together. And clearly there are very good links between all of this and they all contribute to the growth of the city. I'm just wondering about the implementation though, because it is so diverse. Are we going to focus on particular strands? Will there be work streams that specifically focus on strands? Because some of it will require a very different approach and some will involve different partners as well. And that may change over time, so I think it's really clear, sorry. It's really important that we have clear strand links. I think we need, this is a very small investment, people... I think we need, this is a very small investment, people, I know we've got budget constraints, but this is an investment in the growth of the city's GDP. We've got so many companies in this city that could export, that could create jobs, and we're not capitalising enough of that at the present. And I really felt it was useful, the links to the UK industrial strategy and the SIMCA economic plan, growth plan. The links at the end provided very useful reading. And I think if we all take notice of that, we'll see the potential that this work has to deliver for the city. But I'm really keen that we, because it is so broad, we've got to main focus on key deliverables.
Thank you. Nick, I'll hand back to you on that point and then open it up again.
Absolutely councillor Moynihan, we will have to focus on some key areas to begin with. An element of that will be trade and investment, because clearly that's going to impact on GDPR. What we're also trying to do at the moment is actually use our links with Borkham in Germany, our oldest twin city, as an exemplar and a bit of a test case, because we have so much more developed links with them. So we're focusing in terms of some elements around business and trade there and also education. And then other things will hopefully follow. One of the things I want to do, if the committee approves this, is to actually then set up a working group that we meet quarterly and that will include key institutions across the city who are in this space. And because just keeping up to date in terms of what's happening and what their focus is, because obviously things will change. As it is at the moment, you kind of like almost find out about things at the last minute in its case. Well, if you knew a little bit earlier, you could possibly do something collaboratively. I mean, SIMCA for instance, they approached us about a German trade delegation just a week. So we're working with them now to actually get some companies involved in meetings there. So yeah, there will be specific strands that we'll probably focus on more to begin with. The idea is that each February, an international update paper is brought to this committee and there'll be some reflections in terms of what's happened during that previous year and if we've had to actually focus and change things. It will be, there's got to be some fluidity in it. And initially, it's for a three year period so that we can then take stock and say, well, actually that worked. We might need to focus more on this strand going forward. We don't need to do as much on that strand and so on and so forth.
I think it's really important that this links to the skills strategy as well. Because we had the community strategy earlier and we talked about it has to link to economic opportunities. And part of that is getting people upskilled, so to make sure that there are clear links to the skills strategy.
Councillor Agencia?
Yeah, first of all, thank you Nick for bringing the strategy to us. As councillor Murray Hamish said, it's really comprehensive. Like going back to the community strategy, I wonder, and it's good that it's focused and it's, you know, that has very clear kind of links to certain citizen places that we've had a relation. But I wonder whether there could be something in there that is more general about how we relate to certain specific communities in the city. So for example, last month, I happened to go to an event that was all in Polish, mostly in Polish. It was like the National Read Day for the Polish community organised by the Polish consulate in Manchester. It had people from all over South Yorkshire attending. Was in Sheffield in my ward and the Lord Mayor was there as a guest as well. And it was a really beautiful event. And it fitting with how, you know, it shouldn't be just about trade and just about opportunities. It also should be about relationships and, you know, because we are a very international city already. And Sheffield is really well known for its, you know, traditions, you know, in steel in particular. You know, if you say Sheffield imitulate to anybody, they will associate it immediately with football and with steel and, you know, and teapots and that kind of thing, immediately. There is no, you don't have to explain where it is, what it is, people know. So it's also about relationship, I think, and it's really, really important. It doesn't just become like a skills thing or a trade thing or an opportunity thing. But it's also about, you know, having those warm relationships with other places. And also not necessarily in a formal way. So if those opportunities happen, so for example, the Lord Mayor being invited somewhere, we make a bit of a fuss around.
Absolutely valid points there. I think the difficulty is in terms of it's just so broad. I think we are getting better now at kind of like finding out what is actually going on in terms of these different communities of interest, different nationalities, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, you know, if we get approaches, then absolutely, if we can help, we can offer, we can signpost. It's working with community groups to celebrate the diversity of what we've got here in Sheffield. We do have limited resources though, so, you know, we can't say yes to everything, but absolutely it needs to be our knowledge.
Councillor, Lee, follow by councillor Dale please.
Thanks Chair, really interesting report, thanks Nick. I noticed you've got a suite of strategic outcomes that you're looking for. So we're funding for three years. What do you see as the sort of measures you'll be looking at to tell you about the success of this initiative over the next three years?
Councillor Dale please, and then I'll come back to you Nick.
Thank you Chair, just looking at this, oh sorry, I was writing myself some notes so that I could ask you a really poignant question. You alluded to the beginning of the report that you're working with Learn Sheffield. And I'm just wondering, you know, we've got lots of young people across the city who are in school and require work experience, two weeks' work experience throughout their school life. And this, it feels like a prime opportunity for us to be able to link in with national and international businesses, to be able to raise aspirations for young people. But schools are struggling at the moment to make those connections with business, with, you know, some schools maybe twinned internationally, I'm not quite sure. Is there an opportunity there for us to be able to raise that aspiration at that very early level when we're talking to our colleagues across the world as well?
In terms of success measures, it's a difficult one in the sense of because it's so broad. I mean, part of it will be in terms of things like, for instance, if businesses participate in trade missions, for instance, then actually secure some contracts or, you know, there's some tangible outcomes there. Other aspects might be in terms of numbers of students engaged in particular programmes, in terms of student exchanges, for instance. Other things might be less sort of like tangible in the sense of it's raising awareness, it's affecting introductions. You know, you can't sort of like say, well, if this X amount of pounds was generated, it's something a bit broader than that. I think other things in terms of certainly working with the universities, an outcome could well be in terms of they either retain or increase their international student numbers, for instance, because that's a particular issue at the moment. Doing things, I mean, we've just started a programme where we're actually just working with universities in terms of trying to look at how we can welcome international students coming here. So I've been doing some walking tours around the city centre, we've had them in the town hall. Because the thinking is that when, you know, if they get a nice feeling when they first come to Sheffield, they are going to be our ambassadors when they then return overseas. And hopefully, we'll have this nice experience, which then actually gets other people coming here. Alternatively, they get their families coming here and spending money in the economy because they, you know, they decide to come on holiday here and visit. Other things in terms of if we're working with our colleagues, say for instance, in the cultural team and marketing Sheffield, if we can collaborate in terms of securing international events or festivals or collaboration. One of the things we've just done is we've hooked up a German interpretive arts group. I'm not sure what interpretive arts is, but looking to see if there is a Sheffield interpretive arts group that will do something with them. So again, an outcome, a success would be actually if we marry the two together and they do whatever it is they do. So it's quite varied to watch this space. And the intention will be to obviously report back in February in terms of what success is looking like so far. Councillor Dale, in terms of student opportunities, absolutely. I think one of the issues we've got is the resource restraints. There's not, back in the day, there used to be lots of student exchanges, you know, Borkham in particular. It was a case of secondary schools, host families and what have you. We are actually talking at the moment with Hallam, for instance, in terms of they're looking to see if they can get some funding to support disadvantaged students, obviously university level students, actually going abroad overseas just for a week. And can we actually do something with some of our partner cities? Our German partner city of Borkham actually has some potential funding that they can assign to that. So there's an opportunity there. Other things, it may well just be raising awareness using technologies that don't necessarily cost much. So for instance, in terms of our children's university team and working together to say, do some online learning sessions over Teams. So it's not necessarily you going on a trip to wherever, but at least you're actually starting that engagement with a foreign student overseas that hopefully you might actually then engage with going forward. And it's not just in a lesson format. But, you know, we do need to try and actually link up where we can. The other thing is in terms of, there's going to be an increased emphasis on the business side of things in terms of engaging with foreign owned companies. Because a lot of the evidence that DBT come out with is that if a company is actually, a foreign company is invested over here in the first place, they are more likely to actually stay here because they've had that initial outlay and potentially invest again. So if we can link some of these international companies potentially with students here, so they get that flavour. Again, it might not be a case of, well, you've got a week abroad and you're going on a plane. But just having that interaction with a foreign company will hopefully.
Nick, thanks very much. And if I can just, you know, make a few comments of my own, because I think this is a really important strategy for the city. We have really stepped into our role as a global city over recent years. And earlier this year, myself and the chief executive were able to lead a delegation of Sheffield businesses to our partner city in Pittsburgh, two cities that have got a huge amount in common. And since then, we've been able to welcome visitors and potential investors to our city to further deepen that connection. When we were there, it was striking how similar our places are and how our two city stories are integrally tied. In 1875, 150 years ago this year, Andrew Carnegie set up his first steel plant in Pittsburgh using the Bessemer steel production method, which was, we know Sheffield was at the forefront of developing the Bessemer production. So that has then, the invention of this city, the makers, creators, the inventors here have shaped global industries for centuries now. And then in turn, people from around the world have come to work in our steel industry here and been welcomed to our inclusive, tolerant, diverse city. And what happens here shapes the world. That hallmark of made in Sheffield that Angela has mentioned is known as a badge of quality around the world. Electronic music, made in Sheffield, football, made in Sheffield. Warp Films today, going from their office at Park Hill to Hollywood. We're coming back with eight Emmys for the global sensation adolescence. Warp Films, made in Sheffield. The world's first Chinese World snooker champion lives and trains in this city, made in Sheffield. And today, new investment going into the steel industry in the Don Valley to make sure that Sheffield continues to play its part in advanced manufacturing here, but also contributing to our national security. And then also, the city of sanctuary movement, made in Sheffield. 20 years ago, in this chamber, we took the decision to become the UK's first city of sanctuary, a decision that has then sparked movement across the country and shows that we have always been that welcoming, inclusive, tolerant and international city. And it's right that this strategy brings that all together. So I'm really pleased that we're able to take this decision today. So we've got a couple of recommendations before us, that we're recommended to approve the draft international strategy and to note that progress on delivery of the strategy will be reported to this committee as part of an annual update. Our member's happy to support that update. Great, thank you all very much. That concludes our business for today. Really appreciate everybody's contributions today. We've taken some big decisions and we will continue to move forward. Thank you.